We're going to call the meeting to order. Good evening. I'd like to start this meeting, and first I'll start out with agenda item number two. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. The proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV cable channel two. Please note customers of CenturyLink and Cox Communication can view this program in high definition on channel 1002. And it is in standard definition on channel two. You can also watch the meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, on the GoPro app. The Planning Commission meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, can be viewed on the Internet at www.kclvtv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcasted on KCLV and the web the Saturday of the meeting at 10:00 a.m., Monday at midnight, and the following Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. Would you all please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Chair DeSalvio.
Present.
Vice Chair Schlotman.
Present.
Commissioner Cherry.
Present.
Commissioner Toussaint.
Present.
Commissioner Williams is excused. Commissioner Rogan.
Present.
Commissioner Chata.
Present.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item number four, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters on the agenda for action. If you wish to be heard, come forward to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, will be limited. All comments made under this item is for specific action items with cross-reference to those items. Are there any members of the public that wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Seeing none, I'll close that portion of the agenda, move on to agenda item number five for possible actions for any items from the Planning Commission staff or applicants that wish to be stricken or held in abeyance to future meetings may be brought forward at this time.
Mr. Chair, we have some housekeeping items. The applicants wish to obey items 13, 14, and 20 through 24 to the March 10, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. This is the first advance request for these items. And the applicant wishes to obey items 15 and 16 to the April 14, 2020 Planning Commission meeting. This is the first advance request for these items. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is noted as a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on any of those housekeeping items? Seeing none, I'll close it. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to hold or to obey items 13, 14, 20, 21, 22, 23, and 24 to the March 10, 2020 Planning Commission hearing, and items 15 and 16 to the April 14, 2020 Planning Commission hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You've heard the motion. Please cast your votes.
Yes, it is. Thank you.
And that motion carries. Thank you. I'm going to suspend a normal order of business and move on to, I'm going to bring item 36 forward. Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Through the chair, if I could quickly disclose that I am in the cannabis industry, but I will be voting on this. Oh, I thought you said 36. I apologize.
If you're here for 36, come on up.
So I will be voting. It doesn't affect us any greater or lesser. I will be voting on it.
Thank you. We're going to hear item 36 first, and then we'll move on to 37. So if you're here for item 36.
Mr. Chair, I'll brief 36. Mr. Chairman, the 2019 Nevada Legislature approved AB 533, which added a requirement for marijuana cultivation and production facilities to have a minimum distance separation of 1,500 feet from a non-restricted gaming establishment. This amendment will incorporate that requirement into the minimum special use requirements of the specified uses in Title 19. Additionally, a survey that is signed and sealed by a surveyor registered in the state of Nevada will be required as part of the application submitted for a special use permit. The survey will be required to depict the required distance separation buffers of 300, 1,000, and 1,500 feet, as well as all applicable uses within those buffer areas. Staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to disclose I've built many of these dispensaries and cultivation facilities and so on and so forth. And I, this won't have a greater or lesser effect on me than anyone else, so I will be voting on this matter.
Thank you for that disclosure. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to the Commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is, I mean, this is just to pretty much, I think, align our local ordinances with state ordinances, and regardless if we agree with this or not, it's aligned everything with our state ordinances. So seeing that, I would move to approve on TXT 78196.
Okay, you all heard the motion. Please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, that item will move forward to City Council and be heard in ordinance form at a future City Council meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Summerfield. Okay, we'll move on to agenda item number 37. Please come forward, state your name for the record. I have staff. This is item number 37, DIR 78191, applicant owner, City of Las Vegas, for a possible action on a request for a presentation on the Maryland Parkway TOD planning grant awards 135. Staff recommends approval. Staff report.
Good evening. For the record, Marco Velada, City of Las Vegas. We have tonight for the Planning Commission a presentation on the City of Las Vegas' portion of the Maryland Parkway Corridor TOD planning grant. With us tonight, we have members from our consultant team, MIG, and the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. The MIG team also has a number of subconsultants, including Nelson Nygaard, Purdue Marion and Associates, EPS, Daniel Vermaat Associates, and Paceline Consulting. We're working on this, on this grant that we jointly applied for with the RTC back in 2018 and received funding for in-kind. The city also provided some in-kind matching for a total of $400,000 to develop this transit-oriented development corridor plan along Maryland Parkway, along the proposed high-capacity transit alignment that extends from the Medical District through downtown down to McCarran International Airport. This, this plan has a lot of relationships to other planning efforts. First, probably identified it by Southern Nevada Strong, the SNRP, the Southern Nevada Regional, the Southern Nevada Strong Regional Plan identified Maryland Parkway and the Medical District as a, as opportunity sites and locations. Later on in the, in the planning efforts for the Downtown Master Plan, there were a number of hubs that were identified along a layered street network that identified transit corridors and other, other areas that were appropriate for mixed-use development and infill and redevelopment opportunities within downtown's 12 districts. This was in an effort to achieve some of those, the plan's goals, including increasing housing, diversify downtown's economy, and create more civic spaces within, within the area. As a part of implementing the Downtown Master Plan, there's also been a concurrent effort to implement the Form-Based zoning code, which is a part of, now a part of Title 1909. And that effort is really to update development standards for downtown to make walkable mixed use environments. The Form-Based code has this convergent, convergence with transit-oriented design elements that we'll be talking more about during this, this planning grant, and you'll hear more as part of updates along the way. But the idea is, is to create these, these environments where we have development that's oriented towards transit stops or transit stations, and it's built to human scale. It also helps set the built form and the built environment for parts of, parts of downtown and downtown's respective districts. And then there's also this relation to, to the 2050 Master Plan, which is still under development right now. But transit-oriented development is the basis for the Master Plan as a part of an infill redevelopment framework that is set up. Over the next 30 years, we're projecting another 300,000 residents to be moving into the City of Las Vegas alone, and that would bring the regional population to above 3 million, in line with some projections from UNLV. With that master planning effort, there's some new land use place types that will be, that you'll see and you'll hear more about as we provide some more information about the 2050 Master Plan in the upcoming months, that, that really fit in well with this planning effort and would help accommodate a new, a new zoning typology that, that might be an outcome of this plan as well. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Danny Fizikas with the RTC to talk a little bit more about RTC's efforts along the corridor and the onboard mobility plan.
Thank you, Marco. For the record, Daniel Fizikas, Senior Transportation Planner with the Regional Transportation Commission of Southern Nevada. Good evening, Chairman, and good evening Commissioners. As Marco mentioned, I'm just going to give a brief background on RTC's role in this project, and also how it aligns to a regional initiative that RTC has been working on for the last three years called the Onboard Mobility Plan. So when RTC and, and City of Las Vegas pursued and was awarded this, this grant, we saw this as a perfect opportunity to align all the work that has gone on along this corridor and in downtown, as well as Clark County as well. All the land use and transportation plans kind of intersect now and can be incorporated into one plan, so integrating transportation and land use together. At the same time, Clark County is pursuing a similar plan with RTC as well, and we're trying to align as much of those planning efforts with the City of Las Vegas efforts So when we say putting the T in TOD, it really means transportation. So RTC will not be doing any land use planning. We are going to rely on the City of Las Vegas to do that. We are the transit agency as well, so TOD would definitely help us in, with ridership if a successful TOD is developed along the corridor. But again, we will not be influencing or designing any land use plans. The city will be leading that effort. I do want to talk about briefly the initiative that, that the city, as well as all the other jurisdictions in Southern Nevada have been helping RTC with, which is the Onboard Mobility Plan. This plan will look at really how we, as the community, move around the, around Southern Nevada for the next 20 years. And it really looks at, and we're coming to the end of the plan, actually, and we've looked at four, many strategies have been, have been developed, but we're looking at four big overall arching improvements and enhancements. And first, on the, on the left, as you can see on top left, it's enhancing our current transportation network. On the top right, looking at what we call high-capacity transit, how, how do we identify high-capacity transit corridors? That could be light rail or bus rapid transit. Enhancing or improving our bus, our parking, our bike and pedestrian network, and as well as incorporating emerging technologies that are, that are coming, obviously, online fairly soon. So I'm going to ident, just talk briefly about what a high-capacity transit is. Again, high-capacity transit could mean bus rapid transit on the left. That's the current transportation mode that's, that's being selected for the Maryland Parkway Corridor. BRT is for, is the acronym for it, but we call it bus rapid transit. Or light rail for additional corridors that have been identified in the high-capacity transit plan, and that map is here. So again, the city, as well as Clark County, City of Las Vegas, City of Northwest Vegas, have worked really hand-in-hand to identify the high-capacity transit corridors throughout Southern Nevada. This is the proposed corridors. As you can see, we have identified Maryland Parkway in red. We also can see Charleston, as well as North Fifth and Decatur. We're also looking at how to expand the current transportation, transit service. So that's one of the first things that we heard in this, in this plan, which is people who are using their bus now want better bus service. So how do we improve that? This map just represents different ways of how we increase that frequency in, in certain areas of the community. So blue identifies additional routes, potential, different routes, more service in those, in those areas, and also expanding the service area throughout Southern Nevada as well. We are coming to the end of this plan, as I mentioned. We have many strategies and goals that we'd like the community to look at. We're encouraging people to go to onboard snv.com to learn more about the plan and also take a final survey and provide your feedback. We are offering, people who take the survey, if they provide their information, they are automatically put into a drawing for Las Vegas Knights tickets, Golden Knights tickets. So please take the survey, and maybe you'll win some tickets. Thank you.
Thank you, Danny. For the record, Jay Rankins with MIG, a principal with that consulting firm, and as Marco had pointed out, we are the lead consulting firm for this effort. And a little overview of the project for you, and this is just a few slides here. I know you've been listening to quite a bit here. The intent of the plan, as Danny had pointed out, we're talking about transit-oriented development, TOD. The transit is being addressed in the onboard mobility study. There'll be a parallel piece of work looking at the design of the corridor, exactly what the stations look like, and improvement, improvements along the roadway itself, Maryland Parkway, and then obviously through the city, connecting through downtown to the Bonneville Transit Center, over to the Medical District. But what we're looking at through this study is actually the, I guess, the OD, the other portion of TOD. So it's the development around those stations, and how do we take advantage of the public investment that will be made along the corridor? How do we ensure that that's contributing then to a development that is complementary to the existing community, helping to create more complete places, more walkable environments, as Marco had talked about earlier? We want to also position important districts in and around downtown Las Vegas for future success. One of the things that we've been talking about with stakeholders already, and we're just sort of kicking meetings off, we're really early on in this process, but it's about the changing face of retail, thinking about what is attracting people to live and work and shop and learn in different places. And that's becoming more and more experiential, and transit can be a major component of creating great experiences, especially with high-capacity transit network. And how do we create development that supports that as well? And then creating a roadmap for stitching together existing assets and new destinations. There are certain communities who have used high-capacity transit investment to sort be the first line in the sand, so to speak, for brand-new development and, say, greenfield development. In this particular instance, and I suppose there are some of those alignments within the onboard mobility study where there's not a lot of development yet, but in this particular instance, we're talking about a place that's well-developed, downtown, the Maryland Parkway Corridor, the Medical District. But there are opportunities for additional investment for infill, and making sure that those are complementary to what's there already, the good assets that are there, and then looking for opportunities for redevelopment, future investment, to fill in the gaps and create more complete places. Our goals are to ensure the development around the station is really true to Las Vegas. That is a key piece of this. We were, our firm was actually a part of that onboard mobility study, and we wanted to develop a set of typology, or a typology, a set of TOD types that's true to Las Vegas and is authentic. Now, we're not just picking up what's happening in Boston, or New York, or Portland, Oregon, just trying to plop it here. We want to do something that's really true to this place. We're calibrating that for bus rapid transit, but allowing that to maybe transition to another high mode of high-capacity transit long-term, so making sure we're not doing anything that precludes a future evolution of the corridor, and then doing something that's really inclusive, thinking about equitable TOD. How do we ensure that the, everybody has a voice in what the future of this corridor looks like, and also that the businesses and residents along the corridor today have a role in its future? So how do we do that? So because what we've seen is investments in similar corridors in some of those markets that I've talked about, Portland, Oregon, Dallas, Charlotte, North Carolina, they've actually seen gentrification at some of those stations, not kind of thinking far enough ahead about what the implications are for land values and rents, and so we want to put some tools in place to start to address some of those issues, and then be a model for other corridors in the region. We're going to be coordinating with Clark County throughout the process. They have a concurrent effort, so we want to tie that together for the community, but we will be doing a deep dive into three priority stations within the city's portion of the corridor. Well, we'll do stationary planning, look at infrastructure, land use, build form, parks and open space, and other infrastructure investments. This is our overall process. It's about a year long. At that front end, we are looking at existing conditions and market analysis, looking at where are those places where the market is, would be most supportive of these types of investments, and there's the, the smallest gap financially, politically, or otherwise, physically, with those connections, with the aggregation of land potential, all those different pieces. Then we're working on those draft stationary TOD plans for the three priority stations, which will be sort of intentionally flanked there on the diagram by a value capture toolkit. How can the City of Las Vegas reap some of those benefits of the, the increment that is created by, or the premium that's created by that investment that's being made, as well as incorporating workforce housing? And then ultimately, we want to make sure that we're measuring success moving forward. This is going to take a while, right, to realize the transit investment, the private investment that comes along with that. And so how do we make sure that we're achieving success and meeting the goals that we set? We anticipate wrapping that up in about a year from now, December this year, January next year. We're tackling this first couple of tasks right now, looking to come back in March to the community, the stakeholders, with the results, where we'll then assess those and drill down on those three priority stations. So our next steps is to work on those pieces that I just mentioned, so I don't necessarily need to reiterate that, but the next piece for the community engagement, we had a really great community meeting last night where we had 70 people come out to the center, give us some inputs on things that they would like to see assessed, at different stations, different development possibilities. So we're going to be looking at the market conditions around those, the physical conditions to support that, and come back with information for the community to look at.
So again, as I mentioned, there, there are a lot of tie-ins with other concurrent efforts that are going on in downtown, and ultimately, this is going to help achieve the downtown master plan's goal, and ultimately, the 2050 master plan's goals to create a more, a better, a better environment for downtown, for people along Maryland Parkway Corridor. We will have a website that, that will, I think it's live now, actually, for, for this project, if there's additional information or questions. And members of the public throughout the entire planning process are more than welcome to contribute for anything that they, that they might want to share or add. With that, if there are any questions, we'll be more than willing to answer.
Thank you very much. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and before I turn it over to the Commissioner, I have just a couple of questions. Have you guys, I know you got grant money and stuff, but have you looked into like a public-private partnership to try, try to reach these goals? And in the second part of that, have you thought about doing any underground, seeing that we have the current underground going for Elon Musk for the convention center, to see how that soil and that ground is? Is it feasible to probably put like a light rail underground so we're not messing too much with the infrastructure above?
So I'll take the, the second question first, and then I'm going to turn it over to Danny and Jay. One of the things with this planning grant is that it deals less with the transit as the mode itself, and deals more with the, the development side. So we'll be looking at the areas around and along the corridor and the, and the stations, but not so much the actual technology. There, there is, as mentioned by, by Mr. Fizikas, there's already work going on, an FTA grant that, that the RTC has submitted environmental assessment documents towards, and ultimately, as mentioned, the bus rapid transit was a technology that the RTC Board of Commissioners selected. So that part is, that part is, is kind of completed, but this effort is going to look specifically at the, the ways to, to create those, those walkable mixed-use developments around those stations.
On your first question around the public-private partnerships, yes, absolutely. A major focus is going to be on implementation. So even in that timeline, you saw that some of the implementation components, the housing strategy, some of the value capture toolkit, is preempting even the, the draft plan. A lot of times, you develop a plan, and then you create that last chapter, which is, okay, how do we implement it? So we're going to be looking at those tools, not only public-private partnerships, but different districts that could be put in place, and other creative tools to make, or realize the vision that the community has for these stations.
As your question for the Boring Company, so the onboard mobility plan has been about three years, working with the jurisdictions with Las Vegas, and we were mainly looking at what we call high-capacity transit, which is light rail, or streetcar, or bus rapid transit. During that process, just in the last year and a half or so, that's when the Boring Company came into, and obviously, it's a private, who's working with LBCA, the Convention Center Authority. I do not, I'm not aware of RTC working with them, but I can certainly get back to you and find out what they, what they're talking, if they have been talking.
No, I appreciate that. I mean, that job's moving along pretty smoothly. Seems to be solid ground. I mean, it's the first undertaking down in the middle of town, other than the Third Straw at Lake that we did for the Water Authority, but I mean, it just, just curious if they kind of looked at that avenue to go underground and not mess too much with traffic and tearing up streets, and I mean, it'd be the city under the city, basically. But that was my question. Any other question from the Commissioner?
Through the chair, I see the Medical District is on the map there. I hope that the group stands firm all the way through, and we do get transit to the Medical District. If we're going to have a great Medical District with, you know, doctors that want to come down here, and people that do research, and students, and, and I know through these plans, funding changes, ideas change, and I hope the group does stand kind of firm to, to get it to the Medical District. Question is, UNLV have a seat at the table in this conversation?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We have a stakeholder advisory working group that actually met today over lunch hour. David Fromer was a part of that. We also did a stakeholder interview this afternoon with one of the campus planners. So we're working with them both on the, the main campus, down in the county portion of the corridor, but also on the Medical District.
Great.
And, and the stakeholders, the community, I think we all feel that the Medical District is a very, very important anchor, and there's actually three stations proposed within the Medical District area.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
You don't need a motion.
You don't? All right, thank you. All right, thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to item six, related items six through 10. Item six, GPA 77926, applicant AMH NV5 Development LLC, owner AMH Development West GC LLC for a possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PROS Park Recreational Open Space to PCD Plan Community Development at the northeast corner of Wallopie and Isaac Newton Way, Ward Four, staff recommends approval. Item number seven, MOD 77927, for a possible action on a request for a major modification on the Lone Mountain Land Use Plan PQF, excuse me, PQPF, Public, Quash Public Facility to ML Medium Low Density Residential, Ward Four, staff recommends approval. Item number eight, VAR 77931, for a possible action on a request for a variance to allow a stub street where cul-de-sac or hammerhead is required, staff recommends denial. And item number nine, SDR 77928, for a possible action on a request for a site development plan review for a proposed 37-lot single-family residential development, staff recommends denial. And item number 10, TMP 77930, for a possible action on a request for a tentative map for 37-lot residential subdivision, staff recommends denial. May I have the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment and major modification will bring the subject parcel into conformance with the Lone Mountain Master Plan and be compatible with existing residential uses in the immediate vicinity. Staff therefore recommends approval of the general plan amendment and major modification. However, the applicant has provided no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the requested variance, and staff recommends denial of the variance, site development plan review, and the tentative map. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Robert Cunningham, 6030 South Jones Boulevard with Tanny Engineering, civil engineer. The site that we have proposed here is a residential subdivision of 37 lots, adjacent to apartments on the north, and on the east side, adjacent to Wallopie on the west, and Sir Isaac Newton on the south. We held a neighborhood meeting, and in general, it was a well-received project with the three or four neighbors there. We've asked for this stub-street variance, let me step over here and show you, in this little area here, our sewer service and drainage for our lot comes in through here. There's a sewer stub right here, we're asking for this so we can bring a sewer lateral in, or line in, straight through here, set a manhole here and a manhole here, and now not have any manholes in the sewer easement. Our site also drains through here into this area. Having the stub-street allows us to keep the water on the street and then minimize it into this area, and we believe that's great justification for the variance. I'll conclude my presentation, but be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cunningham. This is notice as a public hearing, and if anybody from the public wished to be heard on these agenda items. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Toussaint.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Cunningham, I was at that town hall meeting that you had, and the people that were there were really in favor. I was actually surprised that they were so supportive, and I understand about the manhole issue, and I believe that the, what you have proposed is probably the best situation that you could have, considering the way that this is oriented. So, you know, like I said, we had the town hall meeting, everybody was in favor of it. I think this is a beautiful project, and if nobody has anything else to say, I'd like to make some motions.
Please do.
Okay, on number eight, GPA 77926, move for approval.
Oh, six.
Six, I'm sorry, six.
You heard the motion, please cast your vote.
Put my glasses on.
And that motion carries?
Number seven, MOD 77927, move for approval.
You've heard the motion? Please cast your vote. That motion carries?
On number eight, VAR 77931, move for approval.
Heard the motion, please cast your vote.
Number nine, SDR 77928, move for approval.
Heard the motion, cast your vote. That motion carries?
And number 10, TMP 77930, move for approval.
Heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries, thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will all move forward to City Council and be heard as part of their agenda on March 4th, 2020.
Moving on to related items 11 and 12.
Item number 11, GPA 77933, applicant owner International LLC, for the possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from RNP Rural Neighborhood Preservation to SC Service Commercial on the east side of Shrember Road and approximately 650 feet south of Tropical Parkway, Ward Six, staff recommends approval. And item number 12, ZON 77934, for a possible action on a request for rezoning from RE Residential Estates to C1 Limited Commercial, Ward Six, staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, given its adjacency to a freeway right-of-way where traffic volumes are large, the site is no longer appropriate for low-density residential uses. As a commercial site, this property would serve as a transitional buffer between the highway and higher-density residential uses to the west, providing walkable commercial service once the surrounding area has been fully developed. Staff therefore recommends approval of the general plan amendment and rezoning applications. Please note that there are additional letters of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Levi Parker, 3425 Cliff Shadows Parkway, Las Vegas, Nevada, 89129. Good evening, Commissioners and Mr. Chairman. I wanted to just start with saying we do agree and support staff's recommendation for approval. I just was quickly glancing through some of the things, wanted to highlight, the plan amendment is compatible with the existing adjacent land uses, the amendment will be compatible with the existing adjacent land uses or zoning districts, the proposed amendment is conforming to the area and conforms to other applicable adopted plans and policies. It goes on to continue to say the same thing. One thing that pointed, I wanted to point out was, it said that growth and development factors in this community indicate the need for, or appropriateness of the rezoning. So just wanted to clarify that we do approve, and the staff report and the recommendation to approve both items. I do live in this area, so I'm not just coming into this area trying to change anything, but I've been a neighbor, I've been a homeowner in this area for over 10, 15 years, and so very familiar with this area. Here's an overview of the site, just to get your bearings. It's located in the northwest, near the 215 interchange. Wanted to bring this, this is a closer view map of what's currently going on in the area. And so as you can see, here's the site. Currently, just in this area, there is KB Homes, planning around 115 houses. There is Richmond American going in this 22 acres, planning around 150 new houses. You have Harmony Homes in the same area, planning over 330 houses. DR Horton's been building for many years in this area, and some additional land that they'll be building on there, additional 200 or more houses. Also, the large 250-acre site, just in the same area that was on the agenda tonight that got pushed back, went to their neighborhood meeting, they're planning 1,500 houses right in this area, starting from here on. Again, there was no commercial in their plans that I had seen, unless they changed that in the last few weeks. So just wanted to reiterate the current demand for commercial in this area, on top of the new roughly 23, 2,300 new homes that are planned for this immediate area, just to further demand for some supporting commercial services. We feel the location near the interchange, the location off the 215, Shambur's an 80-foot collector way that is an entry point into Providence, so the traffic is already pretty high in this specific area. So we think that the traffic, the location, is pretty consistent for the commercial zoning. This whole west side is going a lot more dense, and so we just feel that it is, just like staff said, it is a conforming use and conforming for this area. We feel that's pretty low impact, there's only one neighbor that's on the west side of this 215, Mr. Stan, which he's not here this evening. There are some neighbors that are, that I'm sure will be speaking here after me, that are located on the east side of the 215. But with that, last things that I wanted to bring to the table, is we have two letters of recommendations and approval letters, one's from Richmond American Homes, that's building the 150 houses across the street. Also, the second one is from KB Homes, that's building the 115 houses across the street, probably the two most affected neighborhoods in this area. Both of them welcomed the commercial services and actually endorsed a letter to provide their, you know, their approval for this. So with that being said, I just wanted to ask for your approval on these items. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item, please come forward, state your name for the record. I'll give everybody one minute. Thank you.
Hi, Jo Scott, 5928 Golden Arrowanaway. We live right across the highway. I'm a nervous speaker, so I'm going to read. I'm asking that you please deny this application for rezoning. First, I think it's premature to ask for rezoning. This is such a giant leap from RNP to commercial, and the applicant stated that they have not decided what they even want to develop. So I believe that rezoning is completely premature at this point. When deciding where to live and choosing our forever house, I went online to the assessor's website and clicked on all the parcels surrounding me to see what everything was zoned for. I wanted to live in a rural community, and the northwest RNP is such a special gem of rural. Nothing bordering our community was commercial, so felt it safe to make a lifelong decision of my home site, with the peace and beauty that the northwest RNP has to offer. To approve commercial zoning to this parcel would completely disrupt our peaceful RNP lifestyle with loud noise and bright lights. How bright will the lights be? How gigantic will the signage be? Will there be flashing giant TV screen highway signs? Will there be an extremely loud car wash? Will we be able to continue to enjoy the use of our backyards? Will we be able to sleep a peaceful night? Will our view now be of trash blowing all around? We don't know, because the applicant won't tell us what his plans are.
Right there, so that way, you passed your minute. I'm picking up what you're putting down, let me get to the next person. I'll get to you. But let me, let me get the next speaker, because you went over the minute, so.
Oh, sorry. Hi. Oh, is it working now? Sorry. Rachel Lewis, 5919 Golden Arrowanaway, and we are here to support Jo. My backyard view will be of this commercial land, and we would like to preserve the area and our beautiful views up there. We chose this house, like Jo did, as our forever home, and we hope that you deny this motion.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record if you wish to be heard.
My name's Matt Lewis, I'm with, I'm at 5919 Golden Arrowanaway, and I too oppose of this. Like my wife said, we moved in this area for our, to be our forever home, and from our back view is our back wall neighbors the end of their parcel that they have, so it'd be directly facing that, so.
Can you show me on that map, just sitting there, point out where your property is?
I don't know if you can see it with my fingers.
Yeah, I can see it. Okay. Just was curious.
Yeah, that's mine, that's our property, so.
Okay.
We're the three N lots.
Okay. Next up, please. State your name for the record.
Yes, my name is Richard Schrader, and I live at 5905 Golden Arrowanaway. I live between the Lewis's and the Scott's, so all three of our houses are right in a line right there, and I agree with everything that Joanna said. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody else wish to be heard on the agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close it. Mr. Parker, would you like to rebut?
Act that, you know, we had a neighborhood meeting, and so we had some time to discuss, but they, the separation between us is the 215 interchange, the 215 highway freeway. Driving's distance from their houses to this site, I think I measured, is over a mile and a half driving distance. There is also a berm, if you were to go out there today, there's a large dirt berm that runs almost from Anne to near the end of their site, I believe, and so it's, there's a large dirt berm that runs there that's also going to kind of block some of the visibility. But we did hear their concern about lights, just because I think that's probably going to be the, maybe the major effect. Traffic, they won't be affected by traffic, they won't be affected by the use, the noise, I don't think it's going to be too much of a difference from the 215 traffic. But the lights, that is definitely something that we will take into consideration and do what we can to dim that area so that they're not being affected by the lights in the future.
Thank you. Okay, before I turn it over to the commission, this is my area, so let me touch base, and I want to answer Jo's question. That's the first questions that I had when Ms. Parker was in my office, and we had a lengthy meeting over this property. Now, I just want you to understand a few things. 2005 is when that placeholder was put on that, when they were, they didn't even have a vision of even building anything on the other side of the 215 at that time. So that's called, what's called a placeholder. Now, that development, and as stated earlier, as you just heard in the last presentation, over 3 million people will be here shortly, things change. Now, with that said, this area up there will need a commercial development. I had the same concerns you had, I was worried about light pollution. He could almost call out exactly what you had in your letter that you read before me tonight. Same concerns, I don't want to see any lights, I want to know the sign. Here's the good thing about it, so we approved the C1 up there, because it does need commercial, it does conform, it is harmonious and compatible, it will work, but whatever comes up there has to come before this body. It has to conform, it has to still be harmonious and compatible. So when you talk about all car washes, or a strip mall, or a gas station, anything that they decide to put there has to come before us for final approval. Right now, he's just asking, put your hand down, sir, public comment's over. He had, he came before us, and came before me, and assured me, anything that moves forward, it has to fit that neighborhood, it just has to. I live out in that area, too, that's why I represent it, and it's near and dear to me, too. I don't want light pollution, I want it to fit, I want it to match the surrounding area. You heard what was mentioned tonight, 330 homes, you got 1,500 homes going there, there's no commercial on that side, and it's way less dense of a use than what's going in there right now. It works, it fits, and that's why I'm behind it. And again, he has to come before us, whatever he decides to put there, or whoever he decides to have as an agent lease it out, or whatever, and they have to come here and get that approval of what goes in there. And if it doesn't work, it's not going to happen, and if it works, then it probably will happen. But I just want to assure you that I take all your concerns into consideration, I truly do. And that was the things that I mentioned to him when I sat down in my office with him, almost to a T. That's why I said I'll get to you, step aside, because you are feeling exactly what I was saying to him. So I just want to reassure you of that. Is there anybody else on the planning commission that wish to be heard on these agenda items? Seeing none, I would like to entertain a motion to approve item number 11, GPA 77933. You heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Motion to approve item number 12, ZON 77934. And that motion carries. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 4th, 2020.
Okay, moving on to, let's see, related items 17 through 19. GPA 78019, applicant DR Horton, owner United States of America, for a possible action on a request for a general plan amendment from PF Public Facilities to PCD Plan Community Development on the north side of Hickman Avenue, west of Cliff Shadow Parkway, Ward Four, staff recommends approval. Item number 18, ZON 78020, for possible action on a request for a rezoning from U on Development Zone PF Public Facilities to general plan designation to PD Plan Development, staff recommends approval. And item number 19, MOD 78021, for the possible action on a request for a major modification of the Lone Mountain Westland Use Plan from OSR Open Space and Recreation to ML Medium Density, Medium Low Density Residential, staff recommends approval. Can I get the staff report, please?
Mr. Chairman, the-
Mr. Chairman, the proposed general plan amendment rezoning and major modification will bring the subject parcel into conformance with the Lone Mountain West Master Plan and be compatible with existing residential uses to the northeast and south. Staff therefore recommends approval of the general plan amendment rezoning and major modification. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Liz Olson, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. As you know, we held our site development plan and tentative map to have some additional time to hopefully work on our grading a bit and see if we can reduce the site. I did email the neighbors last night to let them know, and we'll continue working with them moving forward into the March Planning Commission. So the application before you this evening is just for the zone change, GPA, and major mod. We appreciate staff's recommendation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Toussaint.
Yes, I did have a meeting actually today, and we did discuss these issues. I believe that we need to move forward with this in order to help the area out there, and if there's no other comments, I would like to make a motion to approve.
Please do.
Motion, item number 17 GPA 78019, motion to approve.
Heard the motion, please cast your vote. We fasted in the computer tonight, or what?
It's slow. It's real slow, isn't it?
And that motion carries.
Okay, number 18 ZON 78020, motion to approve.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. That motion carries.
And number 19 MOD 78021, motion for approval.
Heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 4th, 2020.
Okay, moving on to related items 25 through 29. Item number 25 MOD 77358, applicant Wilmington Apartment Community Owner, Grand Canyon Village LLC, for possible action or request for a major modification of the Grand Canyon Village Master Plan Development to remove 7.49 acres from the land use plan at the south corner of Drake Drive and Grand Canyon Drive. Staff recommends denial. Item number 26 GPA 77359 for a possible action or request for the general plan amendment from PCD Plan Community Development to High Density Residential. Staff recommends denial. Item number 27 ZON 77360 for the possible action or request for rezoning from Plan Development to R4 High Density Residential. Staff recommends denial. And item number 28 VAR 77361 for the possible action or request for a variance to allow a zero-foot yard, front yard setback where 10 feet is required, a zero-foot side yard and corner side setback where 5 feet is required, and a zero-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required. Staff recommends denial. And finally, item 29 SDR 77362 for the possible action or request for a site development plan review for a proposed three-story, 282-unit multifamily residential development with waivers of the perimeter landscape buffer standards. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed major modification necessitates creation of narrow, irregular parcels that could only be used for the proposed residential uses, which staff cannot support. The requested general plan amendment and rezoning would also allow residential densities much higher than and incompatible with surrounding zoning districts. Finally, the applicant has provided no evidence of a unique or extraordinary circumstance to support the requested variance. Due to these factors, staff recommends denial of all applications. Please note the following condition change has been proposed. Amend SDR 77362, condition number 10, to require 36-inch box trees in lieu of the 24-inch box-sized trees required by standard condition. Please note that there are additional letters of protest and support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening. Jennifer Lazovich, 1980 Festival Plaza Road, here tonight on behalf of the applicant. On the overhead is the location of the site. It is just north of Sky Canyon Parkway and immediately adjacent to the 95. What you can't see is that immediately to the west of us, this is a developed and continuing developed commercial center. To the east of us is the 95, and to the south of us is some existing commercial, which would be eventually developed as commercial. And to the north of us is a portion of the Sky Canyon community that has a master plan amendment, or excuse me, a master plan designation of medium-low attached, which allows a density of up to 25 units to the acre. The proposed multifamily project would be located in the northern portion of the site, with the southern portion of the site being, continued to be zoned for commercial for a future commercial use. We have worked on this project for quite some time, and while I realize it is a strange-looking map and strange-looking parcel that's before you, it is entirely to maintain the integrity of the Grand Canyon Village update, land use plan. This colored area represents the entirety of the Grand Canyon Village Plan. It was an area of property that never really had a development agreement per se, but did have design standards that needed to be established in this area. The yellow and orange color represent the developed residential areas, and the property here to the north is the property that we're talking about tonight. As you can see in the gray cutout, that would be the area where we're asking for the multifamily project to go. With this rather unusual design, it allows us to maintain the overall density cap that is required in areas where there's a master plan that exists. So we keep, as I mentioned before, this portion in red is the future commercial piece, and then the portion here in gray would be the multifamily piece. The red area in this area that's in between the gray would be part of our driveways and our clubhouse area. This is our overall site plan, and you can see it kind of follows along to some degree on where the residential buildings are going to be. The unique shape of that parcel map is then what necessitated a lot of our waivers and variance requests. We do, as you can see on this site plan, have sufficient setback for landscaping and for parking and things of that nature, but from a mapping perspective, where that parcel line goes, it makes it seem like our buildings are touching up against things, and we're not really doing what we want to do, but we are in fact adding landscaping where it's appropriate. In working on the elevations, one of the things that we thought would be fantastic to bring to this area is a loft-looking multifamily project. So the elevations that we're showing you today reflect that look. If they are three-story units, and the third floor, and if you rented this third-floor unit, you would get, in some instances, a little bit of a loft component to that particular unit. So we have the larger windows. We do match the Sky Canyon color palette, which I think is important to note since we've kind of got Sky Canyon wrapping around us. So we continue that consistency of the Sky Canyon color palette on our site as well. Be happy, I know this is kind of a long application. I've distilled it down as much as I can. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody from the public wish to be heard on these items? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and I will address this, seeing it's in my area. Yes, we've been working on this for over a year, and I appreciate everything that you've done to take it to where it was, which looked like apartments, to something that looks like, almost like townhome-style loft. It's definitely well-needed. I think it fits. It works as a great buffer for the freeway. It's going to be surrounded by commercial. I can't really see any high-dollar homes that would actually want to probably be stuck next to something like that, so I think it's definitely a good fit, and it's a beautiful product. I had some of the main concerns that you discussed and answered them in our meeting that we had, but we did attend, we did have a neighborhood meeting on September 30th, which I still have my notes from that meeting, and it was 10 people that did show up, and their main concerns were, you know, heavy traffic, break-ins, and, you know, stuff to that nature. But I think no matter what you develop, when you have infill, you might run into situations like that. But I asked you what the price points were on these, and you told me somewhere between $1,200 and $1,400 a month, which to me tells me that it's going to be people in there that's got skin in the game at that kind of price a month.
It's actually $1,200 to $1,700.
Yeah, so, I mean, I definitely look at the concerns of the people. That's why I hold on to these notes for so many months, in case this does, because it was supposed to come before us, if I remember correctly, in January, and then City Council in February, but we were still working on it, misogynant and making it what it is today. I think it works. I think it fits. It's harmonious, and if there's no other comment, I'd like to make a motion to move that forward, but I have a condition, you know, of the 36-inch box trees instead of 24.
Yes, and we-
And with the placement of those, you could work out with Mayor Pro Tem.
That's what we'd like to do. Like, for example, we're not entirely sure on the east side adjacent to the freeway if that's the best place for 36-inch box trees, but if we can just keep working on that with Mayor Pro Tem as we move forward to City Council, that would be great.
So you agree to bump it to 36, and then between now and City Council, if Mayor Pro Tem decides to work with you on that east portion, then that's between you and her, but mine-
Understood.
-would be a 36-inch box tree for this project.
Understood.
So you agree?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Do you would like to re-deck addition?
It's a pretty lengthy condition, so basically, condition 10, anything that says 24-inch box tree will say 36-inch box tree now.
All right, thank you. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve item number 25 MOD 77358. And that motion carries. Item number 26 GPA 77359, motion to approve. And that motion carries. Item number 27 ZON 77360, motion for approval. That motion passes. Item number 28 VAR 77361, motion for approval. And that passes. Item number 29 SDR 77362 with condition 10 added, 36-inch box trees, motion to approve. And that motion passes. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, those items will move forward to City Council and be heard as a part of their agenda on March 4th, 2020.
Thank you.
Moving on to related items, 333230 VAR 77990, applicant Lee's Discount Liquor Owner, Azure and Tenaya LLC, for the possible action or request for a variance to allow 49 parking spaces where 100 parking spaces are required, and to allow one loading space where two are required on the south side of Azure Drive and Tenaya Way. Staff recommends denial. Item number 31 SUP 77991 for the possible action or request for a special use permit for proposed 17,500-square-foot package liquor off-sale establishment with a waiver to allow zero-foot distance separation from existing liquor establishment tavern where 1,000 feet is required. Staff recommends denial. Item number 32 SDR 77992 for a possible action or request for a site development plan review for a proposed 17,500-square-foot rental retail development with the waiver of the town center inner parking lot perimeter landscape and architectural features development standards. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed commercial development fails to meet minimum Title 19 and town center development requirements regarding landscaping, parking, distance separation, and building facade requirements. Due to the associated variances and waiver, staff recommends denial of all requested entitlements. Please note there are additional letters of support and protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Chris Kemfer and Liz Olson here on behalf of Mr. Lee and Lee's Liquor. The particular location you see here was previously approved years ago. This exact same use on this exact same location. Unfortunately, because of circumstances like the economy, and then a school was built to the west of it, and then we changed the town center standards with regard to the tavern across the street, it's gotten in the way of this property being developed. It's now ready to be developed. We had a neighborhood meeting. The only neighbor who showed up was in support of it. So we respectfully request your approval of this project that has been seen and previously approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you wish to speak? Okay, sidekick. All right. This is notice as a public hearing. Does anybody wish to speak on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close it, and I'm going to take over because this is mine, too. I'm busy tonight. Okay, so yes, this is an application that has previously, was approved, just as it's written. It's just that uncircumstances came across with the economy and stuff, so things happened, but they are, they gave me the insurance that they are fully ready to move forward with developing this site that's been sitting dormant for some time with a sign on it. So if there's no other comment, I would entertain a motion to approve item 30 VAR And that motion carries. I'd like to entertain a motion for approval on item 31 SUP 77991. And that motion carries. And item number 32 SDR 77992, motion for approval. And that motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Lee wanted me to convey personally just thank you to all of you. Thank you.
And Mr. Chairman, those items are final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office within 10 days.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item number 33 VAR 78009, applicant owner Hellfire Media, for possible action on a request for a variance to allow an existing six-foot-tall fence in the front yard where five feet is allowed at 1013 South Sixth Street, Ward 3. Staff recommends denial. Staff report, please.
Through the chair, if I could quickly interject. I live within the notification area. Won't be affecting me any greater or lesser. We'll be voting on the item tonight.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Edward Couture. Morning. Edward Couture.
Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the subject fence was built without a building permit and fails to meet minimum Title 19 requirements. Staff finds the hardship to be self-imposed and therefore recommends denial. Please note there is an additional letter of protest since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please restate your name for the record. I'm sorry.
Edward Couture, on behalf of Sierra Masonary. 8:15 morning, sun court. Due to the staffing issues that we all have, we missed the permit on it, and we built the block wall and we built the fence on this, and the reason the fence is like that was to be aesthetically appealing to match the fence on this property here is the, it's a commercial site. It's a museum, so we matched the fence to bring it around. Our girls that pulled the permits pulled the block wall permit. We were under the assumption that she pulled the wrought-iron fence permit as well, but she didn't. We've since rectified the problem. The inspector's been out, and we've paid all the fees, and we've brought it to you guys to accept the fence that we've installed. It's really a beautiful fence, as you can see. The only thing is, in the city, you only allow five feet, in the county, they allow six, and we didn't realize. And so we respectfully ask for your permission to leave the fence.
Okay, thank you. This is notice as a public hearing. Anybody wish to be heard on this item? All right. Just like to interject and say, that's what I mean, quickie saws, right? We can cut the foot off that. Just giving you a hard time. Turn it over to Commissioner Slav. Do you wish to speak on this item?
If I could.
Please, go ahead. Just state your name for the record, please.
For the record, Todd Morris, Tumbleweed Development. I am here representing the owner of the property. I'm the general contractor working on the house that the fence was built on, and there are other fences in that same neighborhood that are similarly built, and hopefully you'll see that the quality of the project matches what's at the Haunted Museum, and it's a smooth transition on that corner. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Slav.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed this item, and it looks compatible with the fence next door. Get your permits next time. Shame on you. And then that, we're going to move forward. Do they need to get permits? Are they?
Mr. Chairman, through you. So Mr. Vice Chairman, they have to get this variance approved before they can get the final permit approved for, and get final inspections on that front part of the fence.
Correct. We have the permit. We've paid the mistake fees and all of that. We're just waiting for the final, for you guys to get the variance, and then we get the final approval, or the final inspection.
Okay, we'll make a motion on this, and I just say, I'm glad that it's open, it's wrought iron, it's not solid. it's not solid five-feet and solid block wall, because I would tell you to tear it down because that wouldn't match. But you can see in there, and that's basically what we're wanting to see on a lot of these fences.
Absolutely, and homeowner wanted some protection.
No further comment, but I'll make a...
Oh, hey, Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in real quick here?
Yes.
Can you see the chair? I wasn't sure if the applicant was aware of condition number five. They're the only piece in the whole block of Sixth Street that doesn't have sidewalk. And there's actually a condition on, a public works condition on this variance to install the sidewalk. And I wanted to make sure they were aware of that before agreeing to the conditions, because sometimes people don't get to all the conditions. I just want to make sure that was brought up, that that is a condition of this variance.
Thank you.
The owner's fine with that.
Item number five, you'll put in that sidewalk. Okay, that's great. Get a sidewalk out of this. Thank you. I am ready to make a motion on item number 33 VAR 78009. Move to approve, subject to conditions.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you for your time and your service.
And Mr. Chairman, that item is final action this evening unless appealed to the city clerk. So for the applicant, that means that they can move forward with that permit in 10 days.
Go ahead.
When you go to item number 34, I just want to disclose that my company's working on a project within the notification area. It doesn't affect us any greater or lesser, so I will be voting on it tonight.
All right, thank you very much, sir. Okay, item number 34 SUP 77944, applicant Cork Torn Owner, Gary Greach Senior and Gary Greach Junior, for the possible action or request for a special use permit for a proposed 3,955-square-foot tavern limited establishment use at 70 West Imperial Avenue, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets all conditions per Title 19 and can be conducted in a harmonious and compatible manner with the existing and future development within the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note there are additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Randy Garrett. I'm the owner of Cork and Thorn.
Okay, if you'd like to explain the application?
This is my first time, so I don't know what I'm supposed to say. So I apologize. I'm applying for a Tavern Limited. Right now, we do have our beer and wine license, and a lot of our clients are asking for alcohol. So we've had to turn a lot of customers away in, because of that. So I'm asking if we can be approved for that.
Okay, thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public who should be heard? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Turn it over to Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have no problem with this. I do own an urban lounge down the Arts District called Artifice, but this is outside the notification area. I think it's exactly what we're needing down there. And so I'm ready to make a motion for approval and support this item.
Please do.
Mr. Chairman, item 34 SUP 77944, I move to approve, subject to staff's conditions.
You've heard the motion, please cast your vote. And that motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that item is final action unless appealed to the city clerk's office in 10 days. So you can move forward with your business licensing process once that appeals period's passed.
Moving on to item number 35 SUP 78030, applicant Veal Lounge, owner Main Street Investments II LLC, for possible action or request for a 5,811-square-foot urban lounge with a 694-square-foot of outdoor seating at 1203, 1205, and 1207 Main Street, Ward 3. Staff recommends approval. Staff report, please.
Through the chair, if I could quickly interject. My company's doing a project within the notification area. It doesn't affect us any greater or lesser, so I will be voting on it tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to state that I own an urban lounge within the notification area. And since I am in the notification area, I would be abstaining on this item.
Okay, thank you, sir. Please state your name for the record.
Laura Dreya, 520.
Staff report.
Staff report.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed use meets all conditions per Title 19 and meets the intent of the vision of 2045 Downtown Las Vegas Master Plan and ATB Arts District. Therefore, staff recommends approval. Please note there are additional letters of support since publication. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Laura Dreya, 520 South Fourth Street. I'm here on behalf of Realm Group, who has created a concept called Vale. This is a Greek-themed establishment to locate in an existing building in the Arts District, which has been vacant for several years. Greek cuisine will be served daily for lunch and dinner, and on occasion, the dining area of the layout will offer live entertainment dinner theater productions such as Cupid Revenge and other mythology-based plays. We consulted with staff to determine the most suitable use permit for this type of business. The applicant and staff agree that urban lounges are the most appropriate use permits for the Arts District. As a result, this comes to you with staff's support, and I ask for your approval as well.
Thank you. This is noted as a public hearing. Anybody from the public who should be heard on this agenda item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and turn it over to Commissioner Schlotman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, abstaining on this item as I own an urban lounge within the notification area.
Commissioner Rogan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would be supporting this tonight. I think it's a great spot, and it's an appropriate application for the other uses that are in that area. And it's that corner slot right there on California and Main that's been vacant. So I think once you get this key piece in there, you're going to see a lot more development, even more than we already have on Main Street and California and Casino Center Boulevard. So I will be supporting it this evening.
Seeing none, you wish to make a motion?
Unless anyone else wants to be heard, I'd make a motion to approve. Item 35 SUP 78030, subject to any staff conditions.
You've heard the motion, cast your vote. And that motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, that action is final this evening unless appealed to the city clerk's office in 10 days.
Moving on to item number 38, citizens' participation. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. No subject may be acted upon by the planning commission unless the subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on a single object will be limited. Anybody wish to be speaking on this? I see none, so I'm going to close the public comment and adjourn the meeting.